Yeah, okay. Well, hey, but thank you, that's very helpful. So, yeah, I know. So, I was, because I was like trying to think if there was a way, if it was just like not like part-time students at the [inaudible] How about this one? That's what I was asking. Oh, okay. Yeah, I don't want to fix it now.
Okay, are we about ready here? It is 5:30. Are we good, Christina? Okay. Good evening, everyone. I am Mayor Shelley Carlson. The Morehead City Council welcomes public input on issues listed on the agenda or of general community interest, time and council permitting. I should also note that today is Monday, November 22nd. Speakers are limited to three minutes each. If you would like to address the council during the meeting, please fill out a form provided by the city clerk, and we will call you up when we get to your item. If comments were submitted to the clerk prior to the meeting via email or phone, those comments will be entered into record. For more information on participation, please visit the council meetings page on the City of Morehead website at www.cityofmorehead.com. And Madam Clerk, could I get a roll call, please? Shelley Dahlquist.
Here.
Matt Gilbertson.
Laura Karun.
Here.
Heather Niesemeyer.
Here.
Deb White.
Here.
Larry Selgevold.
Here.
Chuck Hendrickson.
Here.
Steve Lindos.
Here.
And Mayor Shelley Carlson.
Here.
If everyone could stand for the Pledge of Legions. All right, moving on to number three, Agenda Amendments. Are there any amendments? City Manager Molly.
There are no amendments to the agenda, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to Consent Agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move Lindos.
Second, Niesemeyer.
You have a second and a, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, consent agenda passes. Moving on to number five, approval of the meeting minutes from November 8th, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes?
Motion to approve, Karun.
Deb Kelchel, rule.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The meeting minutes are approved. All right, going on to number six, are there any citizens in the audience who wish to address the council? Seeing none, because the people I see in the audience, I know why you guys are here. So, I will move on to number seven, or number, sorry, number eight, which is a public hearing regarding changes to the fare structure for the Matbus fixed routes and Matparatransit. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Lindos moves approve, or opening the public hearing.
Niesemeyer, second.
You have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, the public hearing is now open, and I will turn it over to Ms. Lori Van Beek.
Thanks so much. Tonight's public hearing is about a change in the fare structure for Matbus related to some new options available for payment. And I have a short video that I'd like to show. This was available to our passengers on our website in advance of the public hearing to give some more information about this, you know, change in our fare structure.
Welcome to this presentation on our proposed new fare structure and the introduction of the Matbus Connect program. This new technology requires restructuring of fares charged on public transit, including Matbus fixed route and Matparatransit. The Matbus Connect program is an account-based system. This means that passengers can go online or onto their smartphones to set up an account and load funds using credit cards. The GTC Customer Care Center can also assist in setting up accounts and loading cash onto those accounts. This program replaces the current Matbus passes and eliminates the purchase of multi-day passes, such as the 14-day, 30-day, and 90-day passes, as well as 10-ride cards. Instead, the program introduces pay-as-you-go and fare capping. The Matbus Connect app will be available from either Google Play or the Apple Store. Passengers can set up an account and load funds in advance onto either their smart card or mobile phone. The Connect app also provides information on the Matbus system, route planning, and live bus tracking. The Matbus Connect smart card is available at the GTC and through the Connect online account portal. When purchased online, the card can either be mailed to you or picked up at the GTC. The initial smart card is free. Load money onto the smart card at the GTC or through the online portal using a credit card. When loading money to the account, there's a minimum amount requirement of $5. With the portal, your card is registered and protected. You can manage your account and request replacement cards if lost or stolen. There will be a $5 fee for the replacement card, and any remaining funds will be transferred automatically to the new card. The new fare structure eliminates the purchase of multi-day passes. The only exception is that one-day passes can still be purchased with the cash onboard the bus for $5. With Connect, each time you ride with your card or phone, the cost for the ride is deducted from your account, and you pay-as-you-go. Pay-as-you-go removes the barrier of high upfront costs for multi-day passes and under utilization during vacation and sick days. With Connect, passengers who ride frequently will earn free rides when their spending reaches a certain threshold. This is called fare capping. Passengers will never pay more than $3 a day. After spending $3 in one day, all future rides for the day are free. Adult passengers will never pay more than $42 in 31 days with fare capping. This table provides a quick overview of fare capping. All riders will never spend more than $3 in one day. Elderly passengers aged 60 and older, and those with disabilities, will be capped at $27 in 31 days. Youth in kindergarten through 12th grade will be capped at $27 in a 90-day period. The cash fare will remain at the current rate of $1.50 for adults and $0.75 for elderly aged 60 and older, youth (K through 12th grade), and persons with disabilities, including Medicare cardholders. For cash payment, a paper transfer ticket will be issued by the driver on request. This request should be made at the time of payment when you board the bus. Transfers will be valid for 90 minutes rather than the current 60 minutes. Paper transfer tickets will not be needed with Connect. The ride payment is valid for 90 minutes to make transfers between routes easier. There will be no change in the $5 cost to purchase a one-day pass with cash onboard the bus. The one-day pass is generally purchased by occasional or visiting riders. With Connect, you can save $2 daily as you earn free rides after reaching the $3 fare cap in one day. The last fare change in the cost of multi-day passes was 12 years ago. Although the new fare structure eliminates multi-day passes, with fare capping, you earn free rides daily and over a 31-day period. The previous multi-day passes were valid for 30 consecutive days, so essentially you receive one additional day with Connect. The price change from $40 for a 30-day pass to $42 fare capping in 31 days is a difference of $2 for an adult. The price from $26 for a 30-day pass for discount riders to $27 fare capping in 31 days is a difference of $1 for elderly and disabled riders. Currently, we have 90-day youth passes for $26. With Connect, youth earn free rides after spending $27 in 90 days. The semester pass is currently offered as a promotional fare to faculty and staff at U-Pass participating colleges and to students of colleges not participating in the U-Pass program. Currently, the pass is valid for specific dates based on semester class schedules. The fare price would change from $45 to $60 and be valid for a period of 120 consecutive calendar days from initial use. The semester pass can be purchased by students showing proof of class registration and sold at the GTC Customer Care Center. Currently, we have a downtown pass and Sanford pass. These two passes are part of a promotion to encourage transit use in the downtown area. The pass would be renamed Business Pass and be available for purchase by employers for their employees at the rate of $27 for 31 days. This is a change from the current fare of $22.50 for 30 days. With the new technology, Matbus will be able to set up organizations to manage these cards online for their employees. There are many benefits provided under the Connect program. Transfer tickets will no longer be needed as your ticket is valid for 90 minutes. Passengers will no longer need to have exact change or carry a paper change card. Change cards expire after one year, but funds on the Connect account do not expire. There is no upfront investment, and you don't pay for days you don't ride. Earned savings with pay-as-you-go means that you pay no more than $3 in one day. A work commuter riding the bus two times a day, five days a week, wouldn't spend more than $15 a week. After three weeks, the fourth week would essentially be free. Funds can be added to your account through the mobile app or online customer portal. Once loaded, the funds are available immediately. The GTC Customer Care Center will also be able to set up accounts and load funds to your account if you're using cash or don't have a computer. Currently, Matparatransit does not utilize an electronic fare box. The older Matbus fare boxes were updated and installed in the paratransit fleet and will now offer more payment options. The cash fare will remain at the current rate of $3 for persons with disabilities certified as ADA paratransit eligible. Exact change will no longer be required. A paper change card will be issued for use on future rides. The new Paratransit Connect system will be available for loading funds onto a smart card or the mobile phone app. A minimum amount of $5 is required when loading money to your account. Under pay-as-you-go, $3 will be deducted from your account each time you ride. Pay-as-you-go removes the barrier of high upfront costs, such as purchasing a 20 coupon book for $60. Fare capping does not apply to Matparatransit. The initial smart card is free, but the replacement card will be $5. Coupon books will continue to be sold in advance for those passengers without access to computers or credit cards, but may be discontinued in the future for other fare options. For passengers certified as ADA paratransit eligible, the Sunday fare will remain at $3. A new rate is being established for the general public who wish to ride on Matparatransit on Sundays at the rate of $25 per ride. The proposed fare structure changes are subject to a public comment period and public hearings. An informational meeting is scheduled for Thursday, November 18th, 2021, at the Ground Transportation Center Conference Room located at 502 NP Avenue in Fargo, North Dakota, from 4 o'clock to 5:30 PM. At this meeting, Matbus staff will be available to answer questions and receive input prior to the final recommendation to the Morehead City Council and the Fargo
I didn't want to repeat all of the public comment period information because we're past all of that now. So, thanks for your patience listening to that. It's sometimes difficult to explain it without the visual aids. I did, we did hold a public information meeting, and comments were submitted by email, and we got eight comments from the public. All of the comments were favorable to the fare structure changes. Basically, there were questions on how do I need internet or Wi-Fi to access the mobile ticket? And they don't. When they're boarding a bus, they do not need that in order to access their ticket. They just need it to load and set up their accounts. And then we answered other questions about can you have both a phone and a smart card? Yes, they can connect the two to one account and use either form of payment. Currently, the Ground Transportation Center where the buses meet does not have Wi-Fi, but the Fargo IS said they could implement public Wi-Fi at this location. It would just require a password to be updated regularly and provided to the passengers. So, one of the passengers wanted to know if they could connect to their bank account directly rather than using a creditor debit card, and that is not available at this time. There was some concern about fraudulent sharing of cards requiring price increases in the future from one passenger. And then the old app, the Matbus app, will go away, and it will be replaced by a new app called Matbus Connect. They will have to delete the old app and upload the new app. And we'll have the same features on it, like trap tap ride and live tracking and trip planning. And then there were several people who commented that they were glad it was going to be good for 31 days instead of 30, as that matched up better with their schedules for the month. So, with all that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or if
Okay, thank you very much, Lori. Since we're in the public hearing portion of this, I'm just looking to see if there's any members of the public who wish to make a comment, and if not, then we'll close the public hearing portion, and then we'll address questions from council. And again, seeing no one else in the audience that is here for, not here for a different reason, I look to for a motion to close the public hearing.
So move, Niesemeyer.
Do I have a second?
Wait, seconds.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, and any opposed? All right, the public hearing portion of this agenda item has been closed. Are there any questions? Councilmember White.
Thanks. Lori, you and I talked a little bit before, so I'm glad I was able to ask you a couple of questions, and I wanted to say, I think this sounds great. I really like the added convenience and the added financial benefit for folks that are frequent users. And I was glad to see that we're making progress a little bit on the Sunday service, that now there's an option for the general public to use the paratransit. And as I mentioned to you, it'd be nice if we can eventually get something that's a little more affordable, but it's a first step. And the one question I had was, you know, I think this is, there's a real benefit in terms of for folks that have maybe less access to transportation, and so just getting the word out, and because that's also a workforce issue, too, that do you, is there, do you do any outreach to places like Morehead Business Association to, you know, send information to them so they can share it with their employees or go to job fairs or things like that, where, you know, folks that are looking for jobs, if they knew they had better access to transportation, this could be something that could be, you know, really beneficial to them in that, in that search?
We do have plans for a large marketing program as we kick this off. We have gone to the Minnesota Business Association and presented in the past, and be happy to do that again. But there will be many opportunities where we will, we'll be out in the community explaining the program, and we plan on putting a wrap on one of the buses, too, so that as it's driving around, you get that idea that there's no new mobile ticketing is available.
Any other questions? Councilmember Selgevold.
Lori, when I was, I was reading the paper version of it, I'm always curious when they said you get an elderly discount, and I'm, because, because, yep, and so, and I, the video answered it, but on paper, I didn't, I didn't know that, and I don't know if that's something that maybe you could look at, so anybody who might be qualified for that discount can read about it, too?
Yes, sorry about that. Sorry we missed that.
All right, any other questions or comments? Councilmember Dahlquist.
Thank you, thank you, Lori. I really appreciate all these improvements, and it's going to make things so much easier. Thank you so much for doing this, I really appreciate it, because I know, I have a brother that when he lived here in town, he used the buses all the time to go everywhere because he didn't drive. And so, this, this is great. Thank you so much.
So, looking for a motion to approve this resolution.
Lindos, move approval.
Second, Niesemeyer.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? All right, seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the resolution passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Lori, we appreciate all the work that you've done on this. All right, moving on to number nine, a public hearing related to proposals to adopt the redevelopment plan for the Days in Redevelopment project area and to establish the TIF for Tax Increment Financing Plan for TIF District Number 30. Do I have a motion to open this hearing?
So move, Deb White.
A second, Karun.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, and I'm going to turn this over to City Manager Molly, and then you can direct us on what to do next.
Happy to. So, the team is putting together, gathering some more information, so if it's all right with you, can we continue the hearing and come back on the 13th with more information?
Okay, and then so we'll just leave the public hearing portion open.
If that's possible, yes, let's do that.
Do we need to table it, or? Okay. Madam Mayor, we just need a motion to continue the public hearing to the 13th. So Lindos will move that we continue the public hearing until the, yeah, it's the 13th. Well, it's going to be December.
That would be correct.
Dahlquist, second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to continue the public hearing until December 13th. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the hearing will be, remain open and be continued until the 13th of December.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. On to number 10, another public hearing. I have a motion to open the public hearing of the proposal of the Morehead City Charter Amendment by the Charter Commission.
Lindos moves to open the public hearing.
Wait, second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, the public hearing has been opened, and I will move this over, defer this over to Assistant City Manager Mike Greets.
The, if you'll remember, we did the first reading on this ordinance, the second meeting in October, and the next step in the process is to hold this public hearing tonight for this change to the, to the city charter related to membership. I guess rather than rehash what we talked about a month ago, I'll just pause and let you conduct the public hearing.
All right, thank you. Since this is the public portion of the hearing, are there any, has anybody else wandered in to make any statements as far as the public hearing portion of this agenda item? And I do not see anybody in the audience with that, so do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So move, Niesemeyer.
Second, Lindos.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the public hearing portion of this agenda item has been closed. Any questions or comments by council? All right, seeing none, I would need a motion to approve the proposal of the Morehead City Charter Amendment by the Charter Commission.
So move, Deb White.
Oh, just a minute. City Attorney Shockley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Since you need an affirmative vote of all the members, you could move both A and B together.
Okay. All right, so, Councilmember White, I don't know if you want to revise your motion for A and B?
I will, I'll include both A and B in my motion.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second, Lindos.
You have a motion and a second, and this is an affirmative vote of all council members and approval vote by the mayor, so if we could do a roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Karun?
Yes.
Gilbertson?
Aye.
Niesemeyer?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Selgevold?
Aye.
Lindos?
Yes.
Hendrickson?
Yes.
And Carlson?
Yes. All right, the proposal of the Morehead City Charter Amendment by the Charter Commission has passed. All right, I'm moving on to number 15, I believe. This would be the first reading of ordinance number 2021-18, an ordinance adopting the 2022 fee schedule, and I will turn this over to Jenica Flanagan, our City Finance Director.
Good evening, everyone. I have before you today the first reading adopting the 2022 fee schedule. The attached fee schedule is a compilation of the various fees imposed for the services provided, license permits issued, and numerous programs offered by the City of Morehead. An annual review of the fee schedule is conducted to ensure the amounts collected cover operational and program costs while attempting to remain comparable with regional communities. The fees that you reviewed, a number of these we've discussed in our budget workshop meetings over the last couple of months, just highlighting a few of the changes that you'll see in there. There's increases to a couple utility enterprise funds that we have. Wastewater, we're proposing a 2.5% increase. Sanitation fund is proposing a 2.5% increase. Forestry, we're proposing a 4.6% increase. You'll also see some increases in there related to various park programs offered throughout the City of Morehead. The majority of these changes, we have projected revenues and incorporated those into our preliminary 2022 budget, which will be before you for final adoption at the next meeting on December 13th. We will also have the second reading of this ordinance at that December 13th meeting as well. That's all I have for you tonight, if you'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Flanagan. Are there any questions? Are there any questions? All right, seeing no questions or comments, so I have a motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance number 2021-18.
So move, Niesmeyer.
Lindas, second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or comments? Seeing none, if we could signify, signify, all, all in favor signify by saying yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Any opposed? All right, the first reading of ordinance number 2021-18 passes. All right, now number 17, moving on to mayor and council reports. Are there any council members who wish to report? Councilmember White.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of items I wanted to mention from the Human Rights Commission meeting. One is we picked our award recipients for this year's Human Rights Awards, and I believe we'll, we'll probably be announcing those at an upcoming council meeting. And so, and so I'm encouraging all of you to celebrate with us as we recognize the human rights work done by these different members of our community. And then I also wanted to mention that we've started collaborating with the Fargo Human Relations Commission. So we'll now be attending their meetings quarterly, and they'll be attending our meetings quarterly, and just another opportunity for us to collaborate. And then the last thing I wanted to mention is something that I think will be coming to the council, just an informal message from the Human Rights Commission, and it has to do with the upcoming council, or excuse me, boards and commission appointments that I thought I would actually give you a preview of that because I know to be timely that we will probably be looking at appointing for seats that become available in January. And so they just asked that, you know, we be mindful of looking at the extent to which the makeup of our boards and commissions represent the citizens of Morehead and, you know, we, you know, just with the idea being that we do better when we have many voices at the table and represent our community well. And there's many different ways in which you can recognize diversity, but just a couple to keep in mind as you're looking at it. So for instance, about half of our boards and commissions in Morehead currently have no members, no people of color on them. And only about a third of the seats are, appointed seats are held by women. And there's, those are just two of the things that we were able to get access to in terms of information. But just something that you could be mindful of as you're looking at qualified applicants that you might consider ways in which that we can make sure that our boards and commissions really do represent our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember White. Does any other council member have any reports? Councilmember Lindas.
So this is a little bit of a segue, but also although this is primarily a city meeting at the recent County Planning Commission, there is a vacancy on the County Planning Commission, not for someone from Morehead, but someone from a city in Clay County. Same thing goes, there's opportunities to serve on county and represent the city, too. So keep your eyes out. We probably should do a really good job advertising those on places.
Thank you, Councilmember Lindas. Any other council members who have reports? None, okay. For mayor reports, first of all, I wanted to say congratulations again to Wayne Ingersoll on the More Hard Award. I wasn't present at the last council meeting. So also a thank you to Mayor Pro Tem Chuck Hendrickson for filling in for me. I needed to be out of, out of town for a day job work commitment. So thank, thank you, Councilmember Hendrickson, and congratulations to Wayne Ingersoll. Did have a kind of a lunch and learn, although it was a dinner, a dinner and learn, with the YMCA Executive Director Steve Smith to learn a little bit more about what the YMCA does and the fact that they have all of their supervisors for scheduling after-school care is located here in Morehead, and they serve almost 2,400 students around the Fargo, Morehead, West Fargo school districts. They provide the after-school care for all of the Morehead school districts. So that was something I was not completely aware of, and I feel like they provide services to a small school district in and of themselves. Also wanted to thank the League of Women Voters for a really great conversation. I presented to them on November 5th, and there were a number of audience members that were specifically from Morehead, and we had some great conversation. And congratulations to the Morehead Business Association. I know City Manager Molly and I were co-presenters, facilitators, emcees, that's what, that's the word, co-emcees for their 10-year plus one annual banquet. And so that was a really fun night to celebrate all things Morehead. Also wanted to say congratulations to DS Beverages. I was able to attend with Councilmember White and City Manager Molly the chamber ribbon cutting. DS Beverages started here in Morehead, and they just keep increasing their footprint. They now have 125,000 square feet of space here in Morehead, and they are a distributor in the tri-state area, I think perhaps even a little bit beyond North and South Dakota and Minnesota. And Doug Restemeyer does a great job leading that organization or that business and really creates a family atmosphere. Let's see. I have a lot to report on. The local option sales tax mayor's task force has had its second meeting. They are starting to really kind of fine tune a little bit what a vision might be. And my understanding, I was unable to be at the second meeting, but my understanding is they're also looking to develop some subcommittees, so there will be opportunity for even more people to get involved in that. So stay tuned for that. And then just wanted to give a shout out to Hayden Swanson from Living the Dream Pottery Studio, which is based here in Morehead. But if any of you were able to take in the Christmas market, I'm not going to try to say it the German way, but the Christmas market, even though it was in Fargo, the mugs that were, that you could purchase for the event are handmade all by Hayden Swanson from Living the Dream, and he's based here in Morehead. I think he made 2,500 by hand, so it was quite the number. And then also just a quick shout out and happy 13th birthday to Ms. Catherine Molly. So that's all. I'm turning it over to you, City Manager Molly.
Thank you, and thank you for helping me get to her party, actually her orchestra concert and then party. So the, a couple things real quick. I just want to assure, build trust and confidence, our executive leadership team today went over a really robust plan for snow removal in Morehead, the different temperatures and types of snow, and when you scrape, and how you pre-treat, and all of that kind of thing. It's, it's, it was really great. I may share it, just so you can see the kind of the depth of analysis that goes into what snow removal is. When it snows, it isn't as though they're just some guys that, or gals, the and gals that jump in their trucks and move it. There's a, it's a, it's quite a, quite a process. Just wanted to share that. And we'll be into that season before we know it. So I want to make sure everyone knows we're going to, snow and ice is one of our key essential functions that we do, and we're ready to go. So the other thing is that the holiday season is coming, so we're ready for that as well. We've got the holiday kickoff, November 23rd at 5:00. There's going to be music by the Morehead High School, well, Morehead High School students, singers and players and the like, and the, and the lighting of the tree, the Holiday Lights Parade on Saturday, December 4th at 6:30, which starts in Morehead. I'll be in touch with the council as far, this week, as far as what engagement and participation in that is going to look like. Skating with Santa on December 5th at the Sports Center from 2:15 to 4:15, and then sleigh rides at MB Johnson the week of, well, it's December 21st, 20th, 21st, and 22nd from 1 to 5 at MB Johnson. And as soon as it snows, once again, we'll have the snowshoes and cross-country skis available here at the YAM comps to head out into those great trails. And we plan to just keep the foot on the pedal on these outdoor activations and make this winter season one of the four great seasons not, not to be forgotten. So, thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Molly.
That is on December 5th at 2:15.
Yep, that was the skating with Santa, for those who probably weren't able to hear, somebody from the audience had kind of asked a question. So moving on to number 19, but there is no executive session tonight. So moving on to number 20, is there any new business? Okay. And last but not least, number 21, do we have any citizens who wish to address the council? Okay, sir. And I don't know if you filled out a form yet, but if you haven't filled out a form, that's fine. You can do it after you're done speaking. But if you want to come to the podium, please feel free, and we will put three minutes on the clock for you. So the green says that you're good, the yellow will start flashing at about 30 seconds, and then the red means that your three minutes is up. And then what I will need you to do is state your full name and your address for the record, please.
I am Mark Stanslin. I'm, live at 446 Brooky Avenue, South Morehead. It's about this fair thing for the, for Matbus. I read it, I don't know how many times I read it, but it kind of seems like they want to do away with that $40 a month or $90 for two months or whatever. First of all, I don't, somebody told me that this is supposed to be on a computer. I don't have a computer, and I really don't want nobody to know my information. And I asked Matbus Systems and all that, and it's kind of like, well, this is the way that it's going to have to be. So now I got to sit and pay $1.50 to get on the bus, and then to get a transfer, another $1.50 to come back home, spending of all four bucks. I don't think that that's right. It should just be left as is. You know? Couple other things that I'll add over Fargo here. They got done with the bus terminal, but yet the goddamn floor is all scratched up. Every time I got to go to the bathroom, they got no toilet papers in both men's and women's. So then I asked them, why don't you guys go to a four-roll toilet paper? Heck, they, maintenance people said that they don't want to do that. It's like they don't care. Go around, toilet and all that, you could see everything, all these trashcans, well, mostly in Fargo, they're goddamn full all the time. It's like nobody changes nothing. One time I asked, one time I asked the custodians and all that if they could change the can layers out there at the bus station, she said that's not her job. That's somebody else's from the outside. Her job is to only maintain on the inside. And, well, there's one or two more other issues here. It's the bus stops. All these bus stops should actually have a solar light on them, because a lot of times I always see people actually taking their foot and smashing these windows. Maybe in Fargo, maybe they should just kind of have a post on all bus stops that any vandalizing will be in removal. They got, they could have that bench, and they could just have the chart board and all that, with the schedule. So either that, or else maybe on these bus stops, maybe they should just do away with glass and have plexiglass, like a three ply like they do at the hockey arenas. This way, if anybody wants to sit and kick the windows and all that, this way they'd be breaking their ankle. You know, and then, like I said, that shouldn't be the city of Fargo's fault or the city of Morehead's fault. It'd be nice if things could just change a little bit. Thanks, bye.
Thank you, sir. I, I wish Ms. Lori Van Beek was still here because we would connect you with her. She just gave a pretty in-depth conversation about some of the changes we just approved, actually, for the Matbus. But what we can do is we will get her name and phone number and get you connected with her, and she would be the one to report some of those operational suggestions that you have as far as the toilet paper and the garbage removal and things like that. So we will get that for you. So thank you very much for coming and providing us with that information. Are there any other citizens who wish to address council? Seeing none, then meeting is adjourned. Thank you, Morehead. Have a fun night and happy Thanksgiving. Seeing none, then meeting is adjourned. Thank you, Moorhead. Have a fun night and happy Thanksgiving.